Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Good evening and welcome to the May 18th, 2020 meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Need to adjust downward. Bear with. And item number two is Public Participation Guidelines for Remote Meetings. So since we've gone remote, we have the ability to take testimony via email or via form on our website. So if you wanted to give public comments at the end of our meeting, which is tonight, Agenda Item Number 13, you would email publiccomment@saute26.org or you can use a form on our website, which is at saute26.org. And there's an alert for our meeting tonight, and within that, there's a form you can fill out. Just a rule for those who are sending public comments via standard email and not the form, the only way that we can consider a public testimony is to include your name and address for the record. So half of the emails I do get throughout these meetings, I usually email them back, please give your name and address for the record. So on that note, the final housekeeping on that is that it's, we hope to read all testimony into the record. We will read it as received. So this is receiving testimony, so it's not for deliberation. So that's just how we have a standard policy of taking that testimony. So it's not for discussion, but it's for us to understand where you're coming from. So that housekeeping item, and if the responses get too numerous, we will be unable to read them all into the record. So it's an all-or-nothing proposition. So if we end up getting more than we can record over camera, because it's an unreasonable amount, and you know, we've gone to about 15 at a time, 15, 20 without issue, if it gets to 50, it becomes too much. But on that note, even if we do not read it on camera, it will be in the record through our minutes. So I think that covers it for Public Participation Guidelines for Remote Meetings. And I will put it on to Item Number Three, which is Information Regarding Merrimack High School Graduation. And I'm going to turn it over to Mark McLaughlin, and if you could please introduce the panelists for this agenda item and kind of frame out the discussion.
I will do that. Happy to do it. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'm going to start with just a couple of general comments, and then I'm going to turn it over to the following people. So happy to have tonight Peter Bergeron, Assistant Principal at Merrimack High School, Rich Zampieri, Assistant Principal at Merrimack High School, Harley Hall, Senior Class Advisor, and Corey Ducharme, Senior Class Advisor, as well. But before I turn it to them, I just want to say a couple of words. I would say that since the COVID-19 pandemic began, one of the newer, you know, a catalog of concerns that we've had to attend to, one of the really most significant ones had to do with high school graduation. Particularly as the weeks unfolded and we began to realize that we might not have a school year like we typically do. We really realized that this could impact graduation, as did all our colleagues across the state and really around the country. And so really, we have been working very, very hard to make sure that we can achieve two goals. One, the primary goal of all, is the safety of our students and their families. Nothing else matters. Nothing else matters. But close to that also was a desire to try to maintain as much tradition as we could. One thing that really makes Merrimack special is its adherence to traditions. And we know how much traditions mean to our students, and frankly, to all students. And the sad fact is that in order to marry those two goals, safety and tradition, there are going to be some things that are just not going to be entirely possible. But I want to pivot and say that what we've done, and I want to call out the work of the high school, what they have done, is, is I think, an excellent marriage of those two principles. And I really want to call out a couple of folks. Harley Hall and Corey Ducharme. I think that if we had said we'd like a graduation ceremony on the moon, that they would probably have been able to have plans worked out for that. They have been working with the senior class officers, they've been listening to parents, they've been working with administration, and they really have been doing fantastic work. And I say that because I think tonight is an opportunity to move away from, you know, what can't be and what's been taken from us, and move to all that's good and all that's exciting. This class of 2020 deserves our support and our community's support, and those folks at the high school are doing absolutely everything they can to make sure that we can do something safely and to maintain tradition. And so we're really going to need the patience and the understanding of the community in order to help us wrap ourselves around these students to make this graduation a happy, memorable, and most importantly, safe experience for everybody. And so with that, a little preamble, I will turn it to Mr. Bergeron, who will provide some of the details of our graduation plans for the class of 2020.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. Good evening, everybody. I'll just set the stage for you, and actually for Harley Hall and Corey Ducharme, as Dr. McLaughlin said, our senior class advisors. This year's graduation will be held on Saturday, June 13th, with a rain date of Sunday, June 14th. We'd like to make this a most positive event, keeping in mind the health and safety of our graduates, teachers, parents, and community members. Graduation will look different, though we believe that having each graduate walking up to receive their hard-earned diploma is an important part of our school's culture, for that matter, graduates around the world. To be clear, we will have a live graduation. However, only 10 students will be allowed on the field at a time, adhering to social distance protocols and donning a mask while always on campus. The decision to have a live graduation comes from much discussion and consideration. High school administration, seniors, senior advisors, and our graduating seniors will support the support of their parents, friends, teachers. And the Merrimack High School community will have an enjoyable and a very memorable graduation. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hall and Mr. Ducharme. And as Dr. McLaughlin said, and I've already said, they've done a lot of work. We looked at a lot of different options. Not a day goes by where you pick up the paper or you watch on TV. You know, they may have a novel way to do graduation, virtual drive-up. But we feel as a high school, and I think people will embrace this, this is Merrimack High School, this is our culture. We have to do what's best for Merrimack. We can't look to our neighbors to the east, west, south, and we have to do what's best. Keeping in mind, though, that we've used or are going to use some of their ideas as well. And we'll have to be very detailed, and I'm very sure with leadership of Harley and Corey will get that, and we will work with them. So Harley and Corey, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Bergeron. Good evening to the board. Again, my name is Harley Hall, and this is Corey Ducharme, we're the two advisors. If it's okay, I'm going to share my screen, and I'm going to show you kind of a quick aerial, if you will, overview of kind of how this might look. So I'm going to do that here and just put that up on the screen, so everybody can see an image of Merrimack High School, just to verify. Our intent is to have groups of students come in different waves. With each of these waves of 10, they will line up on one side of the school. To use cardinal directions here, they would be kind of in an east-to-west formation. And they'd be lined up, and as groups move forward, each group would continue moving forward as new times come in to backfill. To match that rate, we would have parents in here, and a parent group would be in the stand to see the matching between parent group A and student group A. And we would have the students walk across the stage after their name being read and get their diploma. And then again, for lack of a better term, queue up at the other end, at the end of the track. And once all of this group of 10 is done, this family group would file out, and we would utilize the often unused portion of the school, the backside of the school, for a one-way kind of flow back around to the front. And we would just continue moving with this flow forward. You can see this offers us the tradition of a stage. It offers us a live graduation, and it offers us the video to have some type of video capture, with some of those details are still being worked out. But I wanted to make sure that the board had an overview of what Mr. Ducharme and I and the administrators and Dr. McLaughlin have sat down and come through. So I wanted to make sure that was there. And I can stop sharing my screen here, so I can answer any questions and put it back up if needed.
So just before, if I could just jump in very quickly before any questions, what is clear is that there is going to be a lot of work, a lot of logistical work, that the high school administration and the senior class advisors and others will be doing in order to fill in the details around this event. And so what we will commence very soon is a series of information updates that will be provided when we have additional information available. And so there are some questions inevitably that the board may have tonight that we probably won't be able to answer. But I want this to be known very clearly. We would not have put this option up for the board and the community tonight if we didn't know that we could follow all the safety guidelines that have been called for in the Governor's 2.0 requirements. And so the details will be forthcoming, but it's all in the context of knowing now that we can put in place all the safety protocols required to make this a safe event. And then as Mr. Bergeron mentioned, and I really love how he said it, our culture is unique, and we are really happy to be able to promote a graduation that stays true to the fundamental culture of Merrimack. And everything else will be necessary due to the very unique environment that we're in. And I think we all recognize that this isn't a year like any other. But what I'm so grateful for, the high school administration, Mr. Bergeron, really you've done some excellent work, leading the charge. And then again, the two of us, so many others. But we really feel happy tonight, and we hope that that can project to the students. Because now the decision has been made, now it's all go. And we are really looking forward to making the class of 2020 have maybe the most unique graduation in a while, but I'm going to say maybe one of the best in a way, too. So there you have it. And so we're happy to take whatever questions the board might have.
Are there questions to the voice you've sent us so far?
Yeah, I mean, thank you all for coming up with an idea and something that is true to Merrimack, like you've laid out. And it makes me really excited to think that and know that we'll be able to move forward with something that's so real. The only thing that I would say, and I think, you know, to go through all of those details with us tonight would take us until next week. So I know that there's so much work put into it that we won't be able to cover it tonight. But the only thing that I would say is that we do have, and I'm sure, you know, you've obviously thought of this, is, you know, what are the plan for those families that are not comfortable? Inevitably, there's going to be some families not comfortable being in public. And in particular, it's looked like, if I recall too, it would be broadcast, so if there's grandparents and such, that would be able to see it up close and personal and at least have that experience. I'm sure that you'll make sure all of those details are happening. But I would just say that, you know, that we continue to remain vigilant, which I know we all are, for those that are not comfortable, and to make it as much of an experience for those other family members that may not be able to join those graduates at this moment, at that particular moment on this special day.
So thank you, Cindy, for that. And you're right, we have considered that. And what we will be announcing very soon is what the alternative will be for those families who, for very good reasons, would not necessarily want to join. Those people have a right to that decision, and we're going to work very hard to make them be as included as possible in a way that honors that choice and their safety, but also their right to be included and to have a fun, happy graduation. In the days to come, we'll also be providing information about size, of number of invitees. You know, it's always been the case that, I think, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but in previous years, if we've had to go to Plan B in the event of bad weather, we have said that there would be four family members. I think we've said that.
Yes, if we were to hold the event indoors, it would be four family members that would be invited.
So I point that out only to say that under no circumstances will this event be indoors. So if we can have it be on the day that's planned, we'll have it be on the rain date. However, it may be, and this will be something that we'll have to figure out in the days to come, that we'll have to put a restriction on the number of invited guests. And that shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody, given the realities that we're in now, and given the realities that we've always faced in the event of inclement weather. That's always been out there. So that's really no different. But I appreciate Board Member Wally Umi's reminder that we want to keep those families in mind, and trust me, they will be considered 100% yes.
Andy?
You know, it's funny, the spacebar didn't work to unmute me. So I think this is really good. I love outside-the-box thinking. I think this is a really good idea to do this. Obviously, there's a whole lot of logistics. My only comment is, and I'm assuming this is true, given the volume of cars, just, you know, there's what, 300-some students, give or take? And then there's going to be guests that are there, there's going to be issues to make sure that, you know, the congregation on the outside. I mean, you showed the way things are going to go inside, but then when you look at the outside on the backside, you've got a bunch of people that'll be there with cars and families that are going to be trying to queue up. And we also know, based on the election that we had a few years ago, that when we put a whole bunch of cars at the same time going down the high school road, traffic flow is important, as we also discussed when we did the site plan discussion that we had earlier on. So I just want to make sure that we're working this with the town police and other things to make sure that not only is safety's there, but we can keep the flow going, so this doesn't become frustrating for people when you have sort of that drive-in scenario where everybody's coming to go at the same time.
I think, Andy, obviously, you know, we have our regular graduation, and we can have 300 students go through in two hours. That's with our speeches, music, you know, chorus, band and all. We do work closely with the Merrimack Police Department. I think we'll have to work much more closely on the outside, and also on the inside, too, to make sure people adhere to those social distancing queues. But especially would be important to work with, you know, our department, you know, Chief Denise Roy. So that would be something we would really have to work on.
Right, I mean, you know, so if you think about this, people, if you've got families and students that are meeting, social distancing, walking across the back, they're going to be encouraged probably to get to their cars and not congregate and celebrate there, so that the flow can go. And so I think it's going to be important to set the expectations of the sort of adequate, we'd like everybody to follow through the whole process, and then they can go to, you know, their individual homes or wherever they go to do the celebration, but that you're not going to be, I mean, probably one of the more enjoyable parts of graduation is at the end, when everybody throws the balls and everything in the air, and they congregate together where they can hug and talk and visit and take pictures. And that may be the thing that we've got to stress shouldn't be done in that environment, just to keep the flow going with 10 and 10 and 10 and 10 like that.
You're right, and it is, you know, I think of graduation, usually schools in session. We were talking about that today. School will not be in session. I do know a couple Saturdays ago, Mr. Hall and Mr. Ducharme were able to get over 50 adults to volunteer to put the senior signs out in the yard. So I think that, you know, once again, this is unlike any other year. We're going to have to have more volunteers. And those teachers or parent educators, you know, they have a very good way with students, and they have good know-how how to handle, you know, parents as well. I'm not saying parents are going to be, you know, unruly or anything like that, but you're right, I think it's natural sometimes for people, they want to go up and hug and things of that nature, and that's what we're going to have. We're going to have to get that messaging out there.
And I guess, to give you some comfort, Andy, because Mr. Hall was my daughter's teacher, and she took criminology with him. He is a retired police officer, so when you're talking about the planning, you have someone that has public safety as a career before he even got to us. So we kind of have a wringer.
I'll second that for sure. Yes, but thank you, Andy. That's definitely, those are really important considerations. And like Shannon said, it probably wouldn't come as a surprise to know that Mr. Hall and Peter and all of the administrators, you know, are aware of those things. I'll say it again. If ever there was a time to leverage the strength of this community, it's now. And over and over and over again in these last months, I have really been inspired by the way the community has rallied around our students, our staff, and our schools. And, you know, a strong school district makes a strong community, and boy, have we seen that. And now, you know, the showcase event of any school district in any school year is high school graduation. And we are acutely aware of how important that is. And, you know, as much as the students didn't count on this being, you know, their experience, I'm going to bet that the high school administration and the two senior class advisors didn't think so either. But they know very clearly what their task is, and they want everybody to be safe, number one, and happy, number two. And I think that those two goals are going to be met. And we are going to rely on our community. And I would just put in a plug again, every chance I get. We have, I would just say, hands down, we have the best police department in the state of New Hampshire. And with apologies to all the other wonderful police departments throughout the state, we have partners like you wouldn't believe, and they are going to be right beside us, I have no doubt.
Yep, and just in a closing on this is that I completely agree with the approach. I think it's great, I think it's different than others that I've heard of. I think it may be a blueprint that others may choose to use over time. But we have to make sure, to get to Cindy's point, people need to be comfortable with what it is that we're doing. So stating the safeguards, stating the approach, stating the protocols, so that people all can do it, I think we'll just make it for a happy day and something that the state could look at. I mean, I think, frankly, if we're really going to do this, I mean, I think, you know, some of the news outlets should know so they can see what Merrimack's doing to make it different. Because some of the other things I've heard have not been nearly as creative as this.
So what I would say is, you know, since COVID surfaced, you've not seen communication to the quality, I think, in the state that we have. When you look at our Facebook page, you look at the regular communications coming from Mark to families and staff on almost a daily basis. It comes with detail, it comes with encouragement, and it comes with expectations. So I think that as far as communicating expectations, that's going to be set up. I have the confidence that it will be set up for success, leading in very well. And I know that, you know, when it comes to, you know, the parents of seniors and families of seniors, how to plan accordingly, I know that Mark will have a communication plan in place that will be easy for them to follow and really make for a smooth process. You know, we all know that every rule has someone that wants to see how easy it is to break. And I think that we also have that partnership in place in case that presents itself. But, you know, I have all the confidence this is going to go as well as a day can go under these conditions. Not what we want, but the best of what we can get. So on my note, that's my thoughts on it. Naomi?
Yeah, I just wanted to toss my two cents in and say, I think this sounds wonderful. I'm glad that we managed to have a live component, and I personally am curious what new traditions will emerge from this that we'll keep as we move back into larger venues and back and forth through it.
What a nice thought, I like that. I love that thought.
Johanna, I was hoping you'd say something.
Ah, Johanna.
The senior at the table.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you on the behalf of the class of 2020 for all the work that you've done and all the effort and time you've taken to like put into planning this, and we just really appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you, and all of your friends in the class of 2020. We've got you.
So are there any other questions? I think more fine detail to come for those families impacted, and we thank you for your time, your attention to detail. And we know that you vetted a lot of options, and this is the best one that we could present tonight. So I know that did not, this was not the only thing you thought of. You thought every way you could do it, so it's all appreciated.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And then we are on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Updated Information Regarding Summer Programming with John.
Thank you very much, everyone. As I've tried to communicate to the board, we've been meeting to talk about all of our summer programming. We've been meeting every Monday with the group of Debbie Fornier, who oversees our summer reading program, with Sue Lures, our Title I Coordinator, all of the Language Arts Coordinators, and with Ron DeLude, who oversees our 8.5 and our credit recovery, and along with Heather Barker and Christine Reinhardt and Nancy Romero, who oversee our ESY program through Student Services. And then in addition to Nancy Rose, Melissa Gagne, and the principals have been joining us. So we're trying our best to be on the same page, move forward with all of our programming. So far, as I talked about, our summer reading program is our program that we have for students, really K through 8. And it allows us to have an opportunity to really work with those learners who may fall below grade level. Not necessarily students who are identified with needs under IDA, but those students who fall kind of in-between and need a little more support and help. So we have that population. Glad to hear that Debbie Fornier said she put out letters Friday, and again today. She's already had 90 responses to her program, which is pretty amazing. So we were concerned that maybe parents didn't want to continue with online remote learning, but I think when it comes to skills in reading, we are certainly hearing back from a lot of our parents. And we have yet to even send out our middle school invites. So that's as of today, without those invites going out, those will go out this week. In our Title I program, this is a very large expansion that we're going K through 6 this year. We typically only had this in one school, it's qualified per Title I. And now we'll be across four schools, and we're inviting over 500 students. So that's going to be, we'll see those numbers within the next week or two, how many actually take us up on that. That program, again, will run four days a week, and it'll be a lot of either one-on-one or two-person direct instruction for our students over the summer. And then we are certainly working with the high school with our 8.5. Those invitations have gone out, they're slowly coming in, but they're coming in. And then we'll know more about credit recovery as we complete our end of this fourth term. And then with ESY, we've not only sent out, Heather Barker talked about this last time she was with us, but we've not only sent out invitations and surveyed all our families if they're interested for not only our traditional five-week program, which runs three or four days a week, but we've also but we've also added some additional programming to keep continuous with our services through extended two weeks this summer. So we're trying to far reach and get out to as many students as we possibly can to have offerings for. In addition to what's on the page that I gave the board and the chart I gave them, I referenced last time and I'll repeat that we're working about the whole social emotional, our, our SO-COLLEGE team, our social emotional learning support team. We're working with them and really trying to say, how do we create opportunities for kids and for all kids? So we're not only dealing with the academic side, but the social emotional side. And this trying time, we've been under this COVID nineteen time, really trying to set up some groups, set up some activities that are both educational and fun for all of our kids over the summer. So that's still in the works and that's my update. So can I take any questions on summer planning?
Are there any questions on summer planning? So far, so good. So on that note, we know that you've been very thorough and, and regular in your communications, which has been very, very helpful. You know, not just, you know, what you're, you know, trying to do to make those adjustments, but you know, how you're getting those enrollments. So this is all good news and, and we thank you for the update.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're on to item number five, which is updated information regarding reimbursements for school lunch programs. And I will turn it over to you, Matt.
Thank you very much. On or about March eighteenth, we started our lunch program that was right after everything was kind of shut down and remote learning began. So our main goal at that point in time was to try and assist families with a lunch every single day, whoever wanted it. And that was our first goal, but our second goal was to trying to work with the Bureau of Nutrition Services for the state of New Hampshire and to see if there would be any relief as far as payment goes by them to us. We know that probably some of the parents in the line could have qualified for free and reduced, but we didn't really feel comfortable for asking people names and everything like that while they were in a line getting their lunch. It was not really, it wouldn't be a good way to deliver service under those circumstances. So we just kept a count, which is what they told us to do. And in the interim, we were hopeful that a number of waivers would be made available by them for us to get some sort of reimbursement for those lunches. Well, there were lots of rules and publications that came out, a lot of bulletins that came out. We went through each and every one of them. And in the interim, Dave Zicky, our Food Service Director and I, were having a conversation. And says, you know, we, we've just got to call them up and try and get some clarity, but to try and wade through all of this is really too much. And in the, in the interim, I had sent an email to Sherri White. She's in charge of the Bureau of Food Nutrition Services at the state of New Hampshire. Talked to her about our program and put pictures of our program out there. And she kind of got excited and she wanted more because she wanted to share it with the people in the state. And she wanted to share it with the, the federal level also. So we had some emails going on, some pictures being shared of our program. Took a picture of the Easter Bunny, everything like that, when the Easter Bunny came out to, to feed kids. And then Dave made a phone call and talked with Sherri for, for quite a while. So in trying to maneuver past the, the red tape, Dave Zicky wrote a couple of letters, very short and very sweet. One of them was just stating that on March eighteenth, you know, we had started our program, said it was for, you know, an emergency purposes due to the COVID nineteen. And then another one, you know, requesting that we perhaps have Merrimack High School noted as a eligible school to distribute these meals or for to have people pick up these meals. Because it's all in geography and whatnot. And Merrimack High School didn't qualify, but Thornton's Ferry did. You know, it really wasn't, really wasn't feasible for us to stir out a Thornton's Ferry. They don't have a working kitchen. We would have to transport food from the high school to Thornton's Ferry. It didn't work out. So we had to have Merrimack High School approved as a site. So long story short, Dave wrote these two letters to Sherri after having a conversation, after getting a couple of emails with pictures and everything that, and she was kind of truly moved by what we were doing, that they approved us to get reimbursed for the lunches we've been putting forward to the community members. So that's a good thing. It started, they, they started it April first and they're doing that with other districts who make connection with them. So, so far for the month of April, we put in for twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, which we'll be getting a check from and which is basically approved. So that'll be reimbursed to us from the state for the food program. And this food program will go from, you know, the April first and it'll end June thirty. We do not know quite yet now if it's going to continue in the summer. We're hoping to have a seamless summer waiver also. And if that's happens, we'll be reimbursed three dollars and forty-eight cents for every meal that we put out. So it may pay for itself if we choose to continue to do the program over the summer months. We just haven't gotten that word yet from the Department of, from Education. And so basically, you know, what we have is we, you know, made contact. We put some pictures out there, we made a connection. Dave wrote a couple of letters and we are getting approved for the lunches we've served so far. So all worked out well, as we were hopeful it would. So that's just for your, your information.
Matt, I see a couple of questions. I see Naomi and I see Andy.
This is marvelous news. I mean, we were doing the right thing regardless, but it's wonderful to also have the reimbursement for it, the two together. When did you say the lunches, the, the funding would end for the lunches?
Uh, June thirty.
So that's further out than we would have been able to do it otherwise, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're right now, the, the state is waiting for the federal government to make that available to the state. And then if it's summer, then we'll see if the board wants to continue the program. And then we'll make the, the same connections that we did prior and see if we can get reimbursement. So I'd hope to have that information before we make the decision to do summer or not.
Marvelous. And it sounds like getting this, this, this reimbursement depended on reaching out and being quite proactive and finding it. So kudos for making that happen.
Yeah, Dave, Dave Good and, you know, Dave Zicky has been the president of the Food Service Association for the state of New Hampshire for a number of years. He's, he's, he's not in that position right now, but he's well-known at the state. So that was helpful also and making the personal connection is always good. Thank you.
Andy?
So I, this is great news, obviously, but the question I have is actually related to the situation with we're using the, the caterer to, to fill in the gap. Is it still our plan? Are we still on track for next week to go back to us providing the lunches? Or did that start this week? I sort of lost track of time, so.
Very, very good question. I'm glad you asked it. Today, we use the caterers. Tomorrow, we will be back using our own food service employees, who I believe are really excited to get back in doing this. And so it'll be which is May nineteenth.
Okay.
Okay. Can I just, I just?
Of course.
So actually, that was something I was going to say under comments tonight, but as long as we're on it. So just to remind that we, because there was a, a case of the virus with a night custodian, we decided to put everybody out, the food service people and the day and night custodians for a period of time. And, you know, I'm really glad to say that they're all well. And, and, you know, in this day and age, that's not a guarantee. And so they are. And they are, are cleared to return. And so I thank them all for, for, you know, their, their patience and grateful for their health. And I will just say that we're very grateful for the caterer. One day, I can, I can say this for sure, I was helping Dave Zicky distribute lunches. And I can't tell you the number of people who were really grateful for the catering food, but really said how much they like the, the school's food and, and Dave's offerings. And that's the truth. I mean, a lot of them, they were very nice, you know, when are they coming back? We're excited to see them and we're excited to have their food. So anyway, really grateful to, to that company for keeping us going. And it's nice to know that we've got some food that a lot of our community really enjoys. So starts up tomorrow. So keep coming. No break in, no, no break in that.
Are there any other questions on food lunch? Seeing none. We are on to item number six, which is updated information regarding Federal Cares Act funds due to the Merrimack School District. And we're keeping it with you, Matt.
Thank you. We had talked prior about the relief coming from the state of New Hampshire as far as us incurring costs related to the, the COVID virus. You know, to, to purchase some, and some Chromebooks and devices for students that didn't have enough devices. Nancy Rose took care of that, did a wonderful job getting them right to the families and kept track of all the devices that were out there that were loaned out. There's a number of things we had to do and a number of costs incurred. And so this is something that we've been, you know, hearing that was going to come down from the state of New Hampshire Department of Ed. And I was on a call, one of these Zoom meeting calls, probably around a week and a half ago, I would say. And I asked, I asked the question, what we, what would be, we be receiving? And when would we know? And so the Department of Ed put out a, a list. And on the list is the estimate amount of money that we're probably going to be receiving. And it's three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So that would be for all the COVID-related expenses this year over the summertime and moving into next year. So this would be kind of like a grant that we would draw down on. And it would expire in July of, no, June thirty, nine, two thousand twenty-one. So we would have an entire year to use of these funds. So it's something we've, we're looking forward to and we're going to be allegedly. And I, I believe what they're saying, because it is published on the website, we're going to be getting approximately three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars from the state.
I see questions already. Are you ready to take them? Uh, Andy?
So you taught, we, we know that there, we've spent, so the lunches are taken care of, we understand that. The other expenses around Chromebooks and stuff of that three hundred and ninety-seven thousand grant that we're going to get to use, do you have an idea for how much we might have spent on other, other expenses? For like the, the Chromebooks or things like that? Is, do we know if we've overspent? Have we done just a little?
We, we, we have not overspent. The, the Chromebooks we bought initially were two hundred dollars a piece, around two hundred. So that was like forty thousand dollars. So we probably spent an additional probably twenty thousand dollars in, in devices and gear. There's also, also going to be a replacement cycle due to the COVID virus and having these devices loaned out. That we may have to replace some of them. There's also, you know, some enhanced instruction that's going on that will probably cost out or try and put a cost to that we can claim. So we're not anywhere near the amount of, of spending that, that down. So.
But, but there's probably guidelines for the way that you can account for this during this next year though.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So it can be, it can be labor cost, it can be connectivity cost, it can be definitely device cost. I ask those specific questions. So if it's related, just keep track of it and, you know, make sure you can come up with a, a list. And if any items are items that you purchase, make sure they're inventory, which we're doing and you know where they are.
So for accounting wise, this is something that would be essentially for next fiscal year that we would account for, right?
Well, for this year and next year, yes.
So it, it starts during, in, in this current fiscal year and then runs through the entire next fiscal year?
Yes. It's retroactive to when we started purchasing COVID.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Are there any other questions on the cares funds? And the other question I have, and it's going to date back a couple of years. And that is a couple of years ago, we did receive a presentation from Nancy Rose regarding one-to-one devices for Merrimack. Now, I know that you're just giving us an update on the amount, but that's just, it's not something we need to discuss, but just kind of a, a seed to plant, that knowing that we are in the middle of something. We got to just above water with the situation regarding technology and taking it home. But we also acknowledged the struggles we had because we were not a one-to-one environment. And for some of those kids that did get devices, that was something they didn't have a lot of exposure or tangible experience with. So not only did they have to learn material from home, but they had to learn the technology on which to learn that material. So it's just a seed to plant. You know, I, I know Nancy's listening because she's our moderator for this. But, but no answers need to be given tonight, but just what would it take to get to that? And what could, could these funds do to help there? Every day they're spending with technology will help them if we ever have to send them remote for any reason again.
Well, and the, Mark, Mark and John can talk much better than I can on this subject. The Department of Ed for everything that I've heard is really promoting this, this type of learning going into the future. So even though it's COVID-related, it is going to transfer on as an expectation going into next year. So as far as, you know, hardware costs and what's eligible, you know, Nancy is there and she's hearing this, so she won't be surprised if I call her up tomorrow.
I bet you. John?
Sorry, had unmute there. No, thank you. And, and Matt, you're right on that. I think that, you know, as we said, there's some things that are really hard and trying during this COVID nineteen time. There's also some amazing learning that's going on and our ability to use technology to a level that, you know, was amazing in such a short period of time. Our educators and our leaders in this district really stepped up and had pro-platformed together and put these out to our community as fast as we possibly could. So I think that to Matt's point, that is going to be kind of the, a segue of the new normal as we move forward. And I think in the, the next, when Mark starts to talk about kind of us moving forward, this is all part of the planning. Beyond just the devices, it's really the platforms we're using. Are they the best platforms? Are they user-friendly? Do they give us what we need for educators? We've been doing some surveying of educators as we speak around, what are the things that you need at your disposal to be able to move forward? If our September looks somewhat like now, you know, what, what will we need that's different? So we're a little more planned. And Mark will talk more about that, but I, I, I thank you, Shannon, for, for bringing that up. Because I think it's, it's something that we've tried to make sure some, everyone has a device with them right now. And I think that it's only going to have more of a need. And as Matt mentioned, that return on the ones that we've put out there, we're hopeful, but we haven't got there yet either. So it's going to be a question on, on what do we need to do to move forward to solidify online learning more than we already have.
Are there any other questions on the cares funding? Seeing none, we're on to item number seven, which is information concerning the school district preparations for the return to school. And it's over to you, Mark.
So this last couple of minutes was a, a perfect tee-up to this item. So, so, you know, at the end of every school year, two things happen. One thing is that you, you wind down a school year and that's a pretty complicated thing. And it has to do with, you know, final exams and final projects and grading and inventorying and, and cleaning. And, and then gearing up shortly after that for the introduction of students through summer school. And then, and then all along that, it's getting ready for the new school year. And, and that all takes place more or less simultaneously.
This year it's no different. Um, but, um, it's more complicated by the fact that, um, we really don't know what kind of fall we're going to have. So it's kind of like steering a ship out into open water when you know it's going to be choppy, but you don't know if there's going to be, you know, a thirty-foot wave either. So what we, what we know now is that, um, even today, I think there were some sixty or so, uh, new cases of the virus, um, that were, um, identified by the state DHHS. That number has ranged between sixty and eighty every day for the last long time. So that tells me that, um, there is something still to manage and to be careful about. Um, I'm not the only one who reads the papers, so I know that we all know that, um, uh, when the fall comes, that would be a normal, uh, season of flu and so on, that there's likely to be, uh, a resurgence of this. I don't, uh, I don't know that to be true, but we don't have the luxury of hoping that it isn't. We have to plan. So right now, in addition to all the normal things that we have to plan for, um, we have to do a lot of planning. And the planning is going to take many forms. It's going to be in no, any particular order, and this is not an exhaustive list, but we have to plan on what will, um, our infrastructure look like, uh, in our main offices at all of our schools to maintain the health and safety of our employees. Um, there may well need to be, uh, uh, adjustments made to the orchestration of school classrooms. Um, there will have to be the development of, uh, most likely curriculum. Just focusing on how to, uh, convey developmentally appropriate ways, uh, to students to understand how they must behave. Um, we also are very likely going to have to plan an element of remote instruction because I think it's quite likely that there will be some folks who are very, very eager to have their students back. And we couldn't be more excited to have them back. And there are going to be some families, I'm quite sure, who, uh, for a variety of reasons are going to be concerned about that. And we have to make sure that we provide services to them. And all of that is in the absence of knowing hard data about what the fall is going to look like. Um, and so we have, uh, we are forming a task force that will be comprised of, um, uh, health professionals, educators, administrators, community members, parents who will be hearing more about this in the coming days. Um, and that task force is going to be more or less, um, subdivided into categories. So instruction or remote instruction or health practices and infrastructure updates and, uh, and so on and so forth. And so we'll be meeting soon and then regularly. Um, and we also don't have the luxury of a lot of time. I suppose we have more time than we had, um, in March when out of the blue this hit like a tidal wave and within a matter of days, we had to go from a traditional instructional approach to remote with absolutely no, no ability to really plan for it. And, uh, and now that was true then, but we now have a little advance warning that, uh, this may be necessary. And even though we don't have a lot of time, uh, we're going to have to do our best to make up for that by really good planning. And so the question about the one-to-one devices that Chair Barnes mentioned a few minutes ago is just one example of a lot of things that we're going to have to consider, um, as we move forward and try to construct a, a reality um, or multiple realities, uh, for how to conduct school. But I want to, I'm really, um, I'm, I'm in a, I, I guess I'm in a mood tonight where I want to, I want to say that, again, I'm back to, we've been dealing with a lot of, um, difficulty. And, and that's been real. But John just pointed out, uh, and Matt too, I think that in the midst of the difficulty we have seen, and, you know, and I, I don't want to sound, you know, like just like I'm living in rose-colored glasses, but the truth is we have seen unbelievable things um, that our teachers and our parents and our students have been able to do. Now, it's not been great for everybody. I'll be the first to admit. I know where our faults lie. And, and then in some cases I don't. And we're going to have to uncover those. But those cannot overshadow the fact that we have learned so much about, um, about how to be creative, how to listen to student need. And again, for those out there who'd say, well, you haven't listened to my students' need. I'm sure that's true. But that doesn't mean we're not trying and it doesn't mean we're going to stop trying. But we've really learned a lot of good things and, and we cannot in good conscience, go back to exactly the way things were because we can go back to something better. And so I kind of in, in the mood tonight to say that, yep, we have got a lot of challenges ahead. We've had a lot of challenges and we've got a lot ahead. And there's a lot of unknowns and there are lots of questions that I'm sure that people will ask that I'm asking myself and answers that I wish I could give and I can't. But I know that, um, we have got a, a lot of smart people and dedicated people, both in our, um, in our employ, but also in the community. And they made themselves known to me over and over again, and they're just dying to help. And so I, I thank them all and I think that we can turn the corner on this. And with good planning, uh, we can have a, a pretty darn good start to the year, um, in a, in a new way. And it's going to have to be new. Um, but I really feel confident about that. So we're going to have more to share with the board in the coming weeks. Probably even as recently as the next board meeting, we can have, you know, the beginning of a, of a, of a description of how the initial task force meeting went. And then we'll just continue to provide updates. Um, but, uh, I just didn't want the board or the community frankly, watching to think that we're not, have our eyes on the long-term either. Um, we don't have the luxury of not. We have to. And so we are. And so, um, that's just my way of saying that we've, uh, we're on it and, uh, shortly we'll have more to share, uh, with, with all of you. So thank you.
You're on mute, Shannon.
No wonder no one was saying anything. Uh, are there any questions of Mark? I know it's just laying the groundwork, but, uh, is it just questions for what you're looking for? Andy?
Yeah. So my, my only comment is I think, you know, obviously I think you're right to, you've learned a lot that the people in town and and in the district and the students are, are real creative and, and people have been doing things that are, we didn't think were possible, right? You know, six months ago or four months ago. Um, but I would encourage, um, this is also, I think, g- given the funding that, that Matt talked about from the CARES Act, there's some opportunity here to do some new and interesting things that could pave the way into the future around, you know, not just remote learning, but different types of instructions that are better suited to remote versus in-person. I know we've tried to adapt what we can do to be remote that used to be in-person, but there might be some opportunities to look at. So hopefully part of this group that's this task force or, or group that you're doing looks at those other opportunities too, that we can do things that are more remote fo- remote focused in the future. Um, to help take the edges and, and maybe the, the, the pressure off when things like this might pop up again, right? So.
Absolutely. You moved over, so I'm trying to keep track of all.
Okay. So I want to, so I just want to build on what Andy said, um, because, you know, he's abs- he's absolutely right. Um, uh, there, we have learned, you know, certainly a lot about remote, but we've also learned a lot about, um, how to innovate instruction, you know, in the traditional classroom. And I want to, I want to kind of, um, take back something I said a minute ago because I want to add a nuance to it and Andy made me think about it. So I said that, um, you know, this kind of hit us like a tidal wave and, and we did the best we could with little planning. But I want to amend that and I want to say that, uh, we certainly didn't plan for a pandemic. That is true. But if, if the board and anybody watching, uh, you know, and I know the board does, but remembers that for all this year, we've been talking about, um, universal design for learning. Um, and that was well before we had a hint that there would be a really, um, like action research to put that into practice, um, as necessitated by the pandemic. So in a way, we have been planning and this is kind of what I've been trying to say for some time, which is that, um, you know, I know that our transition, uh, to this has not been perfect. I know that. But I am going to say that it has been far, far better in many respects than I might otherwise have hoped. And I think a large part of that is the work of John and the principles in, in, uh, in getting this principle of UDL up and running. It's not theoretical or philosophical anymore. It's practical. And it's meant for a time just like this. So to the extent that it's been, uh, somewhat smoother transition for us than maybe, you know, I don't know. Um, I think it largely is, is to do with that. If you think of, um, Nancy Rose, who for years has been talking to the board beyond the traditional ways that a technology director talks to the board. She's been talking a lot about, um, leveraging technology or not in the service of student voice. In the student of providing a means for students to elect the best way for them to conduct their own learning. We've been using, uh, that idea conceptually in the way that we've been thinking about technology. Um, we have introduced understanding by design years ago, which is entirely about trying to prioritize what is most essential about what a student should learn from all the sort of the, the noise. And, uh, and none of these things that I'm sharing with you are perfected. But, but that has been all in an effort to move our district forward from being just, you know, we do it because we've done it and we'll do it because we did it. To being, trying to cast an eye into the future. And, and it's almost like this, um, crisis has, has kind of called our bluff and said, so, so what about all that planning? And I would tell you that, um, some of that is coming to pass. And I don't, again, I'll finish by saying, I don't mean to suggest like, oh, look at us. We've got nothing to work on. We have plenty to work on. That's not the point. The point is, um, do we have a vision for how we want to take it forward? And do we have the beginning of a plan for it? And I, and I would say yes. And if you just look back at every meeting that, you know, almost every meeting we've had this year, uh, every couple of meetings, we've talked to you about some of those very principles that kicked off our professional development, uh, plan this summer. So, um, so I would say I take back what I said. We haven't been planning for a pandemic, but I think we have been, uh, creating the conditions to be able to meet this challenge, uh, better than we might otherwise have.
Excellent. Are there any other questions or comments from Mark? Seeing none, we're going to the housekeeping part. Uh, so the approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the April thirtieth, two thousand twenty non-public minutes. Made by Andy, seconded by, uh, Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None abstain?
Is that the one that was absent?
Um, yes.
Then I'm abstaining.
Yep. Okay. The motion carries four zero one with Naomi abstaining. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for the public minutes of May fourth, two thousand twenty. Made by Brandy, seconded by Andy. Uh, are there any amendments to those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed and none, the motion carries five zero zero. And then, uh, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the May fifth, two thousand twenty non-public minutes. Made by Cindy, seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries five zero zero. Onto item number ten, which is the consent agenda with John.
Thank you. Um, I'll start with resignations. I have three resignations. Laurie Bavaro, kindergarten teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School. Karen Estelle, behavior specialist, Reed's Ferry Elementary School. Abigail Garland, English teacher, Merrimack High School. And I have some nominations. Um, our first two nominations were, um, in the district previously, but they are now into permanent positions. Um, Jenna DeShane's, science teacher, Merrimack High School. And Kara Cave, preschool coordinator, district wide. We have two additional, um, Courtney Dorosius, math teacher at MMS. And Abby White, first grade teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School. We also have in the consent agenda tonight, some approval of policies. We'll start with the school board legal status. Board organization, officers of the school board, and then regular board meetings. That is consent agenda.
I'll entertain a motion. Andy?
We, uh, accept the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second? Seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries five zero zero. We are on to other correspondence. I have a number, um, so if you don't mind, I'll take the lead and if there's any that, uh, you got outside of that, uh, please play. So we received email from a parent that was looking at homeschooling as an option in the fall and what resources would be made available for homeschooling. The superintendent was also on that email and has information that can be shared with the parent on the resources available and they, um, if they haven't heard back yet, um, you'll be hearing from, uh, our district offices to, to give you the, those resource information. Um, a second email is from the Conservation Commission. Um, they were looking to discuss with us the use of the parking lots. They're hoping to be on tonight's agenda, but we received the email on Friday. And based on the, um, richness of the content of this agenda and the preparation needed, we were not able to prepare for that agenda item as well. So we'll be reaching out to them to make sure that we are collaborating appropriately. What they're looking for is, um, at Merrimack High School, they're looking for, um, basically the rules about parking and for Wildcat Falls trails. And, um, I guess with the Merle's Marauders Bridge, there's some, um, directives about where people need to park so they can get to the trails and, and, you know, obviously the bridge is not in use right now. It's, it's under maintenance. Um, we got another email from a parent that wanted to, uh, talk about what options were available for celebrations at different schools for, um, different milestones for the students. And, uh, the superintendent was able to give more thorough answers than I could obviously about the mindset of, of how they're planning those kinds of things. And, you know, with all the collaboration that they have been doing. And so, uh, the superintendent reached out to the parent on, uh, the board that we have. And finally, um, this one is from our school district clerk, uh, Pat Heimrich. So, uh, with that, there's a lot going on with the election and I just wanted to give some notes. So, uh, the moderator has set elections Facebook page as the official page for Q and A. So there is a Merrimack elections page on Facebook, uh, but here's the current plan. Uh, there will be voting on, uh, June twenty-third at the regular three locations. Uh, so if where you voted, you know, in person last time is where you vote this time, COVID social distancing, uh, masks and using sanitizer will be required by all who choose to vote at the polls. Um, however, all voters are eligible by virtue of COVID nineteen to vote via absentee ballot. Usually you had to have a, um, specific, um, hardship out of town, uh, unable physically, uh, but based on COVID, that's the unable physically, um, it, it, it's for health. And, uh, they're actually encouraging people to do just that, to vote via absentee ballot. Um, so, uh, they ordered, the town has ordered twenty-five hundred additional absentee ballots because of this reason. Um, so they expect that there will be plenty. Uh, so with the absentee ballot requests, there's a form that can be found on the town website to request an absentee ballot. But what voters really need to do is send the town clerk, who is Diane Trippett, a signed request indicating your name and your mailing address by mail, by fax, and the fax number is four two three eight five three nine, or put it in the drop box at Town Hall. Uh, with that, the voters will be sent both the town and the school ballot. Uh, the ballots will have to be mailed back to the town clerk though. Uh, so you can't, uh, put them in the town drop box. You can, you know, put the request in the drop box, but not the ballot itself. And, um, but if Town Hall reopens before the election, they can be turned in to the, um, Town Hall in person, but only if Town Hall is open. Uh, and if you're currently not a registered voter, you can request a voter registration packet be mailed to you as well. More information to come, but this is what we have right now and we want to share with, with the community. Um, and I think that's all I have for correspondence. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else that had correspondence? Cindy?
I don't have correspondents, but I have a question as it relates to the one piece of correspondence that we received regarding the conservation mission and the Wildcat Falls agenda. And is that something that actually needs to come to the border? Is that something that administration can work through with that party? I'm just trying to figure out if we're gonna delay them in any way, by having to wait for two weeks for a meeting, or if administration, you know, has the ability to just work through that with them separately. I can see no reason why we wouldn't be supportive and allow community access, as it's already open to the community or high school. So I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
I, I would have no problem turning it over. I mean, what it is, it's facilities use. So like, that's where Matt would be the one that normally oversees it, Mark would absolutely be involved. And honestly, when you're talking about, they're asking about weekend access, the only challenge we have with the high school parking lot is when school's in session, and students are present while school's in session, which technically, school's in session right now. So on that note, I would absolutely say that if you feel that, you know, administration, it'd be best to take it, I'd be glad to pass the baton.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would, I would like to do that, because I, I think that, you know, it is a, you know, our properties are community properties. We're in an extraordinary time, and, you know, if there's the ability for the public and the community to be able to use our parking in order to alleviate some of the concerns of some of our other community members, I wouldn't want to delay that. And I can't see where any of us would be opposed to that anyways, so that's why I would like, just to ensure that, make it perfectly clear, if we all agree, that administration has the absolute authority to be able to work with that group to try to make something happen.
And they did extend if, that we wanted a seat at their meeting tomorrow night, that they would extend us a seat at their table to, to discuss the issue. So we can absolutely, if, if there's, the administration can attend and answer their questions, I don't think that's a problem for us either.
Well, thank you. So Matt and I will, will work together, and then we'll be in, in touch with them tomorrow, and, and I, I don't foresee this to be a big, a big problem.
You bet.
Great. Thank you.
So there's no other correspondence before I move on. The second area of item number ten is comments, and I just wanted to, if you'd mind indulging again, kudos to the Merrimack High School grads, they are grad state challenge champions for two thousand twenty. So I wanted to kinda, just kinda go through the process quickly of how they got there. So in the first round, they met Newfound School District, they moved on to round two, where they defeated the Academy of Science and Design. Round three was the semifinals, where they met up with a tough Sahigan team, who was our neighbors based over in Amherst and not far from our town line, and good, good neighbors and friends of ours, so thank you for a good match. And then at the end, we met up at the finals with our, with, against defending champions Plymouth, and we beat them in the finals. It was a tough match, I did watch it on, we were actually losing at the end of the first round, it was a tight second round, and then we did pull away toward the end. So with that, it was an incredible match and a great job from the team. So kudos to Coach Campbell, Dr. Campbell, who was a chemistry teacher at Merrimack High School, assistant coach Linda Mandra, and the entire team, which is Scott Payton, Alex Jobin, Troy Church, Andrew Payton, Nick Gasharna, I, gosh, I hope I got your name right, and Aiden Remick, and thank you very much for a great year, all your hard work representing Merrimack so well, we're super, super proud of you. So, so thank you very much, guys. Wish we could've had you at our board meeting, but, ugh!
There's still time, we'll figure something out.
Absolutely. We'll have to somehow put the, if we can get a copy of the trophy on our homepage, that wouldn't be a bad thing. So, absolutely, we're champs. Thanks to them, not, no thanks to us. No thanks to me, I promise. So is there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, we are on to new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none, committee reports, are there any committee reports to come before the board? And I have one. On the fourteenth last Thursday, the Professional Development Committee met, so they were doing approvals for credit hours, reimbursements, going through recertification, professional development plans going into the next year, getting those finalized for those teachers that are going into recertification, for those that are in the process of getting recertified now, deadlines are coming. The next meeting, because of the end of the year being the way it is for the district, will be June fourth. And also, they have, they had elections for, for next year, so they're in the process. Some have completed them, and some are in the process of finalizing their representation to that committee for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Did I miss anything, John? Because I did show up late, because I was running late from another meeting.
No, you got it all, that was, that's correct. You, you missed John, I'm getting that all in touch for that.
Awesome. Awesome, thank you. So on that note, we are on to agenda item number thirteen, and that is public comments on agenda items. We did not get any forums, and I did not get any emails during the course of this, this meeting. I did actually have to go back to one other thing for, I guess, I don't even know if you call it correspondence, but I just wanted to let you know that I will be on a call with Senator Dean Shaheen tomorrow in a small roundtable, where I will be the one representing school boards in the state of New Hampshire. I'll be in the company of Carl Ladd, who is the Director of the New Hampshire School of Ministers Association, Barrett Christina, who is the Executive Director of the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and a number of superintendents and principals around the state to talk about school district operations under COVID. So I got a call this afternoon, asked if I would be, make myself available, and with fifteen minutes to spare on my day tomorrow before my next meeting, I can. So I will be meeting with Senator Shaheen and, and discussing our experiences and, and our needs as a district. So sorry for the short notice, but that's why I almost forgot to mention it. So other than that, I guess we will take a motion to adjourn, made by Andy, seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed none, the motion carries five zero zero. Thank you and good night.
Night, everybody.